Good evening. All this meeting of the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners for December 3rd, 2025 to order. Start with a motion to adopt the agenda. There's no changes?
Certainly.
Thank you. Mayor Proton.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, we will start with the budget schedule.
Um, so it's pretty similar to other years. Uh, we, I'll be sending out the, um, spreadsheets to department heads, uh, sort of middle of January. They're, they'll have three weeks to send it back to me. Um, and then we'll be having meetings with department heads in February to go over their, um, spreadsheets. And then we'll have the budget retreat with the board April 7th. And then the version, there will be an initial version of the budget, um, and public hearing on May 11th. And then, um, budget adoption at the June 8th meeting.
Good. Any questions?
It's good.
We'll improve improvement program for kids. That's me.
Similar to last year, we're just going to run through kind of ongoing projects we have or projects that we've completed.
Oh, capital for the plan.
Capital isn't progress.
Same thing.
Excellent. How's the food? Everything good?
Let me guess, you're gonna say faster computers or do you? Page two.
On page. You all have them in front of you, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, uh, for parks, 150,000 Lewis Freeman Park, that is in progress. Uh, we got our bids back last week. We have accepted a bid, um, Sanford contractors for 96,000 for the base bid with a $6,000 ad alternate for benches. Um, so we signed that contract, uh, and sent that back to them today. So we should have pre-con meeting here next week or the week after, and, uh, and then we'll set up a date at the pre-con meeting for a groundbreaking ceremony. So we can hopefully get that done in either late December, early January, and then they can get started on that project in the spring. Uh, for the next one, you have the 70,000 was allocated for the McClanahan improvements, skate park and baseball lights. That's complete. Uh, the baseball lights, that'll be a reoccurring expense every year. Um, it's kind of like a lease purchase for the lights at that baseball field. I believe that's 20 or $25,000 a year, which you'll see later. 25. Got the Raffey purchase that you all approved, uh, this fiscal year, 1.4 million. Uh, we owe just over a million on it. Uh, renovation is in progress and Katie's currently working to get estimates for some cleaning and paint, window repair. And, uh, our new IT director, Robert, uh, is working on security doors, cameras, uh, and then checking out the existing IT network there to see what other improvements we need, uh, baseline. Uh, the Robeson Creek Master Park, Robeson Creek Park Master Plan, that's currently in progress. And they're finalizing draft recommendations and finalizing community input. The Town Lake Master Park, Town Lake Park Master Plan, did that twice. That project has gotten a little complicated. The consulting firm Pond, who is also doing Robeson Creek Park, wanted us to pivot a little bit so we can look at different aspects of the park. Uh, no rise study, flood study. Because of the environmental nature of that park, she felt or they felt like some other things needed to be studied prior to us. Designing a master plan that shows a bunch of pretty pictures of things that we wouldn't be able to do. They also discovered that one of the major problems with the pond right now is the parrot feather algae. And that's why fish, uh, can't really survive in that pond anymore because it's, it's taken over the pond and it's, um, choking out the fish and other wildlife, uh, due to, uh, oxygen reduction. So they are working with DEQ, NC Wildlife and North Carolina Dam Safety to kind of give some baseline information together on what we need to do to move that part forward. So what turned out to be a, a loss of a footbridge essentially has now kind of turned into a major, major project. Um, we do have 350,000 from the sale of the Monique or Pittsburgh Road property allocated to Town Lake. Um, so we're hoping that either that can be leveraged for more grant money in the future, or at least be kind of some seed money to get us going. Um, and if this turns out to be a much larger and longer process, uh, if the board sees fit, we can allocate that money to something else to go ahead and see, uh, more immediate impact on other parks, uh, if you also choose. So we're going to try to keep our options open with that money and, and that project.
Uh, some notes on that. I've heard from some neighbors of the park that, um, there was a study, apparently, not a study, um, a project, uh, a physical project 15 years ago. Uh, NC State University was involved. It involved, I believe, Ms. Pamela, maybe you recall this, the draining of the pond or the lake. Uh, there was, uh, changes made to the, uh, surface at the bottom of the lake. Anyway, very significant hydrological impacts and effort. And I'm hoping that there may have been some documentation either before or after that project that would inform proper maintenance ongoing.
Yeah, I, I believe that Pond found that grant.
Oh, wonderful.
And I, I believe that's part of their current assessment, trying to figure out what was done, what the aim was for, for the fix or for the projects, and then they can try to assess what to do forward or moving forward.
Fantastic.
That was for North Carolina State. They were one of those people that was working on that with the town of Pittsburgh. Ultimately, I think the goal was to have a better lake, but it did not quite work out that way. But it was something with North Carolina State that they were working.
That's the general consensus from the public that I've received is that it was supposed to make it better and it, it didn't. Or the lack of maintenance over years led to the current situation that we're in. Um, I think the good news is we, we've got a good team working on it and, uh, we'll get some results. Hopefully, I don't know, end of Q1 next year. I, I hope to have something back for you all to, to look at.
Cause all that should be documented in the, uh, I was gonna say medical records. My mind is still there. All of that should be documented in our, yeah, in the notes and everything and their agenda pack, agenda packages and all of that.
It may be hard copy. It might be so old that it'd be hard copy.
I don't have a hard copy.
No, I'm saying if it were, if it were in down records.
It should be.
That's the impression that I've gotten.
But in general there, I think the goal is to complete the walking path around Town Lake, bathrooms, and then some additional amenities. Uh, but first we want to, you know, figure out all the environmental issues that we're looking at first. Public Works. So we're about a month behind on this project due to, uh, we did some value engineering and changed a few things, um, to make the, the project flow a little better. Um, and then also moved some money around to do some other things we thought were more important. That led to a, a need of a redesign per inspections with the county, which delayed us about a month. Um, but we're still on track to get that through first of the year. Um, and right now everything's looking good. I think they got drywall going up, so should button that up here next couple of months. All right. McClanahan Crosswalk, that was completed about a couple of weeks ago. So we're going to try to look to continue to do a couple of these each year, uh, identify areas where pedestrian crosswalks, uh, can improve safety as long as ADA compliance. Um, and just a shout out to Ben and Daniel for getting that thing moving. And we are currently working on a CMAC project application that they'll have done by Friday uh, for some extra CMAC money that someone else didn't use, that we're going to try to grab. So then we can allocate that to, uh, Chatham Street and Sanford Road, uh, to do some public, uh, pedestrian safety there.
Fantastic.
Daniel Street Resurfacing, we just wrapped up, uh, most of our paving for this year. And as you can see, we continue to focus on the Pittsburgh Core, uh, roads that have probably not been paved in the last few generations or last few decades. Uh, so we're going to probably continue that focus next year as well. Uh, those roads have not been identified. Um, but again, we'll, we'll have roughly 200,000 to go towards, uh, street resurfacing.
It's the approximate mileage that that got us, 200,000.
Is a great question and I will let you all know. But what roads? It's Johnston, Small, Farrell. There was another one. I think we got four roads out of it.
Better than I expected.
Yeah. No Street.
Yep, yep.
Much to it.
I agree. Yeah.
Uh, Town Lake Highway 87 Sidewalk, that is in progress. We have 60% plans and we're waiting on, they are looking to get approval from the feds for the environmental piece. The estimate is well over the current money, uh, for that project. So once we get the final bid number, we'll have to go back to DOT and try to get the remainder of that money. That will likely mean that our 20% match will go up. Uh, so that's something that will likely come to you all with a budget amendment, uh, sometimes when, probably within the next six months. But my guess is probably an additional 50 to 100,000 from the town will be necessary to make that project work. All right. Any questions there?
Yeah, I do. I do. About this sidewalk and all of that. Now, in terms of this becoming a truck route, that's supposed to be the idea.
Yeah, it already is.
Now, are they going to do any expansion, estate or anything?
Well, the DOT's current thought is that the truck route will move to Chatham Parkway once it's finished. And then so the, the need to expand that section of road won't be necessary in terms of truck traffic.
Okay.
And the, this side, this is an eight-foot sidewalk, so it's not your standard curb and gutter in five feet. It's, it's going to be an eight-foot, almost like a multi-use path. So it'll, we get to be a little bit more distance away from the road.
So, since she said thinking that Chatham Parkway may be the, you know, change it to that, how long do you anticipate that change? What the timeframe, will that?
It should be done in 2029. I'd imagine they'll put signage up when they're building it.
One other thing. That area, the current speed limit is what? 35, 45 and then 35 when you get into closer to in the city limits. So they anticipate leaving it at 45? That area?
You would have to, I believe so.
Okay.
We were, if we're looking for a speed reduction or increase, likely reduction, right? We'd, we'd have to just make that request. And what, what section are you talking, you talking about Chatham Park or, or 87?
This, this section, Town Lake Highway 87.
Salisbury Street Sidewalk's in progress. The survey work is finished. Uh, they've been out there the last couple of weeks. Uh, we expect a 30% design soon and then we'll start, you know, continue moving through the design process. We don't really have a graphic for Salisbury, but it goes from essentially Paul's Office down to, uh, Farrell. With some section of that sidewalk already exists, so it's kind of filling in. Um, but this was a design someone did for us just to show what Salisbury could look like one day. So that's really the only visual we had for that sidewalk project. On staff level, it is a bit of our goal, Streetscape is finished on Hillsborough, to then maybe look at some of the side streets and how we can make those more walkable and more enjoyable from a resident, or from a retail standpoint. Our favorite stormwater, um, project, uh, Oakwood Drive, this came in way over budget. And right now this is pretty much on hold until we can figure out, uh, alternative funding sources and, um, just reassessing. That's about all we can, that's about all I can say on it.
So those, that was the bid numbers, right?
Uh huh.
We budgeted like 200,000 or something.
250.
Can you help us understand why there was that big gap?
I don't know. Um, May, you have any thoughts?
It was the area of impact, the New Zealand crossing, it impacted out there, the grating, which was anticipated. And then there's all the inflation cost, which we, when it started, we got there. That's 15 to 30 percent, which is 15. So it didn't look up fast.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We also looked at, we've, we've reached out to the, the funding agency and asked if there were different alternatives that we could pursue. And it, you know.
Stop cap measure.
Yeah, and it, I think the reviews were kind of mixed, uh, but either way, it, it's going to cost, whatever we were going to do was going to cost more than what we have. And the, the specific design approach that we chose gave us the best return, um, in terms of stormwater impacts or lack thereof. And so we didn't want to go and spend half a million to only solve half the problem when you could spend, you know, 750 and solve the whole problem. So it just didn't. We just don't really have a good, good solution right now. Okay. Pittsburgh Elementary School Road, Road Culvert, uh, so we are in the process of submitting a new grant on the 15th of this month for hazard mitigation. Oakwood Drive is just considered undersized, uh, but this one is considered failing, uh, that being that it's a school route also makes this more, um, it makes it a better grant opportunity than Oakwood. So this is, that's why we're pursuing that one first. And then if, if and when we can get some more grant money to, to, to go here, easements are next. And then we've got to check with, uh, or work with Golden Leaf to update, uh, that application as well.
And I think we swapped email or text correspondence, uh, along the, the lines of if we could get a professional engineer to assess the current condition, because I understood it was an emergency repair. But in, in hindsight, it has been suggested to me that it was a very, very good emergency repair that has held up very well. If we could get a PE to sign off on and say, hey, this should be fine. How does that? Have we pursued that?
I don't think so. If, if you look at Chantel, like, we didn't have any issues with that culvert. And it was the storm before where a little bit, uh, we had a small sinkhole form and then we filled that with, uh, a special kind of concrete that can be broken up more easily. And that seemed to solve whatever problem was, was underlying, but, um, May can speak more to that than I can, um, in terms on what the new approach may be.
Smallest possible possible and start getting pieces out of it. It's probably happening all the time. So the storms just made it more that you could see it versus it's happening right now because you've got separations in the pipe. You've got some failures inside the pipe, you're getting out all the pieces. All that really needs to be fixed is not just that one spot structure. It's the entire thing. It was actually pretty lucky that it holds it. It was stable for now, but that's a temporary measure. It's going to happen again.
Okay.
So if you fix it continuously, like fix.
Thank you. And I think it was upsizing as well. Um, I think a new design is.
Yeah, yeah. I do remember that.
Asking for that 36-inch culvert there. Uh, um, on Oakwood.
Oh, Oakwood.
We're talking.
Yeah.
Probably a 24 or 18. Oakwood's got several culverts on the road, one of which was blocked up. This one I don't know. It's much bigger. It's, it's probably three or four feet. Yeah.
I, I just have to state this, that this is probably the most profound, what, what can be done in Pittsburgh question that I got during the campaign. Uh, stormwater. It was dramatic and profound. And I'm, I'm sure we're going to have a presentation today on that very thing and how we can mitigate this. But, uh, this is high on my priority list. Salisbury Street, Oakwood, Pittsburgh, uh, Pittsburgh Elementary School Road. And, uh, also Thompson Street, that floods. Masonic, Masonic. So look forward to your presentation.
Climate action plan is done and we're looking at some low hanging fruit, some things that we can accomplish, uh, rest of this fiscal year and next. So, uh, more to come on that one. Downtown Streetscape, uh, there's a, a few dates there. Um, we had a meeting today about just some minor aesthetic changes with crosswalks and there's been a few changes already from this current design that should save us, uh, some money. So we were just looking about how maybe that money could be moved to something different. So those conversations will continue over the next two years. All right, RFQ is live. You can go to the next one. RFQ is live for Town Hall with police as an ad alternate. Uh, those are due on the 19th of this month. Uh, we put that RFQ out for 11 million after the discussion that we had, uh, with you all last month. So we're looking to see what we can accomplish at that dollar amount from a design standpoint, bid it, see what the bid comes back in at, and then depending on what we have left over in terms of debt capacity, we then could apply that to, uh, police department renovation or, um, add on. So we're just going to, kind of go through the process from Town Hall, a little slower with, with a much lower, um, dollar amount, and then just see what comes out of it.
Um, that, that might be, um, an item that we could dwell on for just a moment longer. Have missionaries elect heard the conversations and the compelling reason why we need to move into a new Town Hall, I would build a new Town Hall.
Yeah.
Thank you. They were briefed on it during their election, actually. And then right after.
Should have known.
All right. Any, uh, any questions about those? Like we made good progress, uh, the past 12 months. You know, some of these projects are kind of still lingering, so we just need to get them knocked out and move on to the next ones. But again, still, uh, very proud of what we, uh, have accomplished since the same topic or discussion last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
The Lewis Freeman Park. The amount was $150,000. So that is going to complete everything that needs to be done there, or do you have additional funding source?
Yeah, that completes it. It's, uh, yeah, the current, um, was 102,000. And that's for Chapel Hill grit. So we've, we've asked for an ad alternate for concrete, uh, because Chapel Hill grit in that location with the stormwater that flows through there on, on some storms, that's just going to be a major maintenance issue. Um, and we already got a price to, to go from Chapel Hill grit to concrete. And it's well within the budget, well within the budget. So we're also now looking at some lighting options and some different, uh, concrete staining and stamping options. Being that it's a small park, we want it to be as impactful as possible. So now that we, we know we have a little bit of funding, um, windfall there, we can try to make it a little better than what the original design was.
And I, I, yeah, let's, let's ask about timeline on that. Let's.
Timeline on Lewis Freeman?
Yeah.
It's going to be quick because it's a pretty small project. So, uh, we are looking to do pre-con, pre-construction meeting next week or the week after. Try to get that done before Christmas and then set a date for a groundbreaking. I believe the, um, the mayor's goal was groundbreaking in January. And then they can start really getting after it, um, and hopefully get it done before the end of the fiscal year. That's, that's my goal. And then have a nice, uh, ribbon cutting for the opening in the spring when it's nice weather.
One other question.
Sure.
About the, the Raffey building. So is that funding complete? Have you obtained the funding for that? You said 1.4 million.
Yeah, we got a loan, you know, our loan was for 1.05. Um, and then the other funding was some of the money from the sale of the Pittsburgh Monique here, um, land back to. Yeah. And then, uh, and we've retained some, some funds for doing some outfit.
That's good, good. Well, I think that's all for right now. Did have to be more notes, but that's okay.
This, I mean, this might be your last budget schedule meeting. So shoot, yeah.
Don't hold back.
We did answer that one about the truck route. That was one of the ones that I was concerned about too. And of course I'm concerned with this, with the stormwater on Oakwood. That's definitely a big concern. And let me go back to the Robeson Creek Park Master Plan, if we could for a minute. That where it indicates new roads to be built by developer.
Yes.
Yeah. Is that the street just there at the credit union that they're going to improve? What is?
They're going to build a new road.
A new road?
That. So if you, if you look right there just above the, the E and developer, that is the existing industrial drive, but moving that road over to the east and it'll pretty much be a straight line. But those, those plans have not been finalized yet.
Right.
So they're, they're still, I want to say they've done, they're in second or third submittal, uh, with development services.
So this particular area here, I know there's the plant, of course. And then there's the fairground and then there's the apartment complex that's close to the Laurel's. Is that affected by any of this?
Plant certainly is. I don't think the Laurel's is.
I don't think so.
Think so.
What about that apartment, pastable? No?
I mean.
Is it called Office Park Drive? That's the industrial park drive?
Like Pittsburgh Business Park Drive or something?
I think that's it.
It's for business park. Okay. So the fairground and none of that is, is affected by it. Okay.
Man. Not that I'm aware of.
Ms. Pamela, since you raised the question of those roads down there, I'll, I'll touch on that very briefly. When I saw the drawings, uh, associated with the park concept, I was surprised that there's a new east west road proposed, just mere feet parallel to, um, Lorax Lane. Uh, and so I thought that it was really odd that, that that developer was proposing to build a completely redundant road just right there, parallel to Lorax Lane. Um, and for reasons of reducing impervious surfaces and economizing, I mean, it's their money, but I wondered if conversations might be had with. economizing, I mean, it's their money, but I wondered if conversations might be had with the owners of Lorax Lane.
Yeah, we did. The I think it was because Lorax Lane is on private property.
Right.
That they don't own.
Yeah.
I think it was simpler for them to just build their own road. Plus, that road in the CTP, I want to say it was supposed to be a hundred foot wide. And so I don't think there was a way for them to to get that done without putting that road somewhere else. So I think it's the goal is for that to be utilized almost as a service drive. And it will become part of the town parking lot that will serve the park.
Okay.
So in the, that's one of the planned changes that we talked with Pond about is maybe you leave Lorax Lane where it is. Tie the parking lot to it to the south. And so then Lorax Lane is kind of a pull through road, access road to the park and still to the plant.
Good.
And that helps achieve the goal of the park parking lot also being overflow parking for the plant when there there's a large event. So we think we got that worked out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, I don't. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I do. Couple of things. I don't know if this works into just something that's an administrative project or if we need to address it as a capital project or a small budget item, but Tiana Thurber and Candace Hunsaker have made it abundantly clear to me that the audio in this facility is not acceptable. That is that when people are sitting in the audience, they simply can't hear us at this table. And I know valiant efforts have been made by the city, but excuse me, the county administration of the the conference center with regard to this new equipment. But it's still just not not working. And I don't want to steal your thunder. But.
Speak on that.
Sure, please.
So I frequently come with a friend of mine who is hearing impaired. And I've even heard other people say that they've turned up their hearing aids and still cannot hear. And I know she has difficulty hearing. And if you remember the last meeting, several people kept saying they couldn't hear. And I know you had to keep turning up the mic and everything and call.
Ironically, you don't have a mic on you right now. There's, I think there's, yeah, there we go.
As I was saying, that I've I've heard numerous people who do wear hearing aids, who are hearing impaired, say they can't even turn their hearing aids up loud enough to hear what's being said and only catch part of the work. And I know even for myself, sitting in the front row, it's often very difficult to hear.
So again, I don't know if that needs to be a budget matter or just something that we can work out. With the county, I do understand, and maybe I'm wrong on this, that we're being charged commercial rates as a local government. And I've been questioning that for years now. Why is it that we're not charged nonprofit rates? If we could be if rates could be adjusted to us paying nonprofit rates, then I'd say let's make the capital investment ourselves. So that we own the equipment that provides adequate sound projection to the audience. Or something along those lines. But if we're gonna continue to be charged commercial rates, I think we need to ask for a higher level of quality of AV. Yeah, I think we talked about it too. Yeah.
Thank you.
And also on sound.
Just so we're we're in the previous year's projects. And then we'll go to.
Okay, new project later.
Priorities are later.
So I wondered, because I saw it as CIP and. Okay, I'll hold those ideas then.
Projects for twenty twenty seven.
All right, you have a memo looking at recommended projects for twenty seven. Lewis Freeman Park is is on there because we didn't know if that was gonna bleed into next year. Quanis Park upgrades. You got new fence coming, but new amenities. That fifty thousand was a part of the money that that was a result of the sale of Monique or Pittsburgh Road property. We don't know yet what that looks like. I think Katie next year wants to get some some public engagement on Quanis Park to figure out what what amenities are requested for that park. So got fifty thousand for that. Hundred thousand for Night Farm Park upgrades. When we had the initial public input opportunity for the Part F grant for Night Farm. We heard shade fencing and seating around the splash pad. So that's what that money is is going for. That was also money from the sale of the Monique or Pittsburgh Road land. You got number four, McClanahan Park improvements, lay down yard and the Rafi renovation. Two twenty five total, hundred thousand of that is from the sale of the Monique or Pittsburgh Road land. That's for the Rafi outfit. We will likely need more than that, I'd imagine, but we'll get back with you all on what that number ends up ends up looking like. And then they're gonna need some storage space at the lay down yard, which is, I guess that's to the northeast of the current baseball field of McClanahan. And so that was part of the land that was given to the town from the county. So that's what the other hundred and twenty five is.
Can you describe what a lay down field is?
It's basically where they can store, you know, rock, gravel, mulch, dirt, and then a place to store trailers, tractors, just their general equipment they use. Right now they're at Public Works. So once they, once the park admin folks move to Rafi, the operations folks are gonna move into a wing of the Rafi building and then they'll they just need a place to to store their equipment and materials. I don't think that's a long term solution. It's probably five to ten years. And then we're gonna wanna likely the baseball park in the South Village is where we're gonna wanna aim to put some more robust park maintenance facilities. Mary Hayes Barber Homes Park improvements, seventy five thousand, that that also came from Monique or Pittsburgh Red Land sale. Looking for swing sets, repairs to existing equipment that's out there and just equipment replacement in general. And some of that is pending a subdivision application at Powell Place. So we gotta, we want to see what's gonna happen with that before we we dive too deep into Mary Hayes and and possibly i- is that another master plan opportunity there? Or is that just some citizen engagement in that community to figure out what's what's needed and what's wanted?
I'm sorry, Mr. Franklin, before you go on, could you tell me about the night night farm park park upgrades again, please? You said fencing and what else?
Fencing, seating and.
Shade.
Yeah, shade. Shade is the number one thing that we've heard over there. There's, there's like two shade structures. There's forty kids on the splash pad. The parents are all huddled under two shade structures.
I've been over there with that. My grandchild, yes.
There's also some runoff concerns. And I learned a new term about children last week called runners, apparently. And so some parents don't want to take their kids there because they're runners and it's just very close to that traffic circle. And when they see a construction vehicle go by, they run, they take off. Yep. So we want to fence that in and make that that park a lot safer.
Back to the Powell Place. I'd love to help spearhead that negotiation with the the residents.
Sure. Yep. The, oh, and then on Night Farm, currently that is our most visited park too. So that's that's another reason why we wanted to to put some funds toward that. All right, East Street, yeah, East Street beautification. There's fifty thousand. I don't actually see that project happening next year, but that is a hold for the forge in part of their conditions. They're required to to provide fifty thousand dollars for the East Street beautification project that we kind of designed a couple of years ago. It's like a rough design from a landscape architect. So that's what that's for. In case that money comes in, we've already got a line item that we can we can move on it. Rock Ridge bathrooms, this is another Monique or Pittsburgh Road project from that funding, hundred and twenty five for dry bathrooms. If you've been to a national park and you've seen a concrete structure that's a bathroom with a hole under it, that's what we're looking at for Rock Ridge. Getting water and sewer out there would be extremely expensive. So this is kind of the the most economical solution there.
No question on that.
Sir.
I've been to some pretty primitive, dry restroom facilities. And I'm hoping that we might do an active composting facility. And I banged on the Google a little bit and it looks to me like a two seat, separate men's and women's or two private stalls, completely separate doors. Could be done with composting equipment around the same price. Perhaps as low as seventy thousand. Perhaps as high as a hundred and fifty thousand. And I'd be happy to share my notes with you.
Yeah, please do. The quotes that I got thus far was eighty five, eighty eighty three and like ninety two. And I want to say one of those was a composting option.
Okay.
Yeah, but please share what you what your research, if I can see exactly what what you're talking about. Playground improvements, we kind of always put fifty thousand in for improvements, just in case we have something break or something that needs repair. We've got some extra money to pull from. And there was an edit on that. It said to playgrounds at Mary Hayes, it's actually just playgrounds. It's for townwide. Apologies there.
Wait, I'm sorry, it's just what?
Number nine. Subscription. Yeah, it says at Mary Hayes. It's just that fifty is just for townwide.
Okay.
Just so we have some money to pull from in case we have slide break or one of these things.
Okay.
Well, it works building. So the the building that the storage building that you all approved last year is already full. So we are now looking for a to mirror that same building just across their lot. This one would be a little more robust, doors, concrete floors. As we look to continue to to buy more equipment for them for efficiencies. And it seems like the right time. If we can't fully fund that this year, we were looking for a partial funding and then aim for it in twenty eight. And that way we can get that done. Any questions there? Okay. Annual street resourcing, pretty standard. The number twelve, you got the widening project for downtown Streetscape. We need to sign the agreement for that. When's that due?
Streetscape we already.
Already signed. So we're gonna have to budget that probably for our audit, since we signed a contract for for that amount of money. So that will be partially fund balance, partially grant. So the money will still be in the bank. We'll just have to move it from unrestricted to restricted, right?
So currently we have, the way we signed the contract was by having a budget amendment for the expected grant through the
Main Street.
For, no, through the legislature that has not passed, you know, that has not been funded yet. So if that does not get funded, then we have to do a sort of replacement budget amendment with fund balance. And that was eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Does that make sense?
No, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So how far, can you tell me the fifteen five oh one widening project starts where and ends where?
Starts at Old Rock Creek. Starts at, let's say McDonald's. Yeah.
Low.
And, yeah, all the way down to just shy of the traffic circle.
So we need to rename that Hillsborough Street widening project. We move fifteen five one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, loads to the traffic circle.
Close to the mill.
For the, for the Chatham view.
And then the Streetscape takes over from there.
But it's also inclusive of Lana Street and the Cafe DM.
And Park Drive.
Most I was concerned about what I suggested about twenty years ago to widen, to widen, you know, fifteen five oh one for streets. So it's been just that long.
Yep.
And, yeah, that's a long time.
Appreciate your advocates for it.
In the world of DOT, that's actually a short time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Town Lake Sidewalk, y'all heard about that one? Salisbury Street Sidewalk, same. Put a little money in there for wayfinding signage. We still need to do the wayfinding design. But if that doesn't get done this fiscal year, then that that money for funding the wayfinding will not be in there. So gotta get that done first. Then you have some just ADA improvements, pedestrian crosswalk, fifteen thousand. We need that number to be a little more. Project idea we came up with this afternoon, actually, in discussing some of this. Possibly a crosswalk at Rectory or Small or doing a sidewalk connection in front of Walgreens and then a crosswalk. That would be at Farrell, because we see people all the time that walk through the grass at Walgreens to try to get to the sidewalk in front of the Harbor Store. So we're thinking we just maybe instead of a crosswalk project, we do the sidewalk and that at the same time. And that should be able to be done pretty cost effectively. You got your Raze project, January and February, action item for you all, I believe. And RFQ is gonna go out this month for design services. And this, that RFQ is for broad scope design services for development services. And then within those RFQs or proposals that we receive, we're gonna select someone from that group to handle the Raze grant. And hopefully get started on that pretty quickly. And just as a reminder, most of the most of what Raze is looking at were the connectivity projects that were in the bike and ped plan that was done many years ago. So hopefully get get most of those project designed. Then we go out for the build grant shortly thereafter to try to fund the construction up. Is that somewhat right? Oh, it is. Okay. Gotcha. You got the culvert project. We talked about that. Town Hall Design RFQ is out. Responses are due back in a couple of weeks. We've received a few questions, a decent amount of inquiries. And just more to come on that. Right now, nothing's in the budget. We just mentioned some things that we think should be.
Funding, let's think.
It'll be a loan.
We think we have. Yeah, the Town Hall will be alone. Now, the design, we probably can pull that from from fund balance and not just be cash.
But then we can pay ourselves back with the loan funds.
Yeah, don't be too worried about the bottom number, the seven million.
All right.
There's a lot of, some of that's already is already allocated and is in our bank. All right, vehicles, is that the, the same?
It's the next.
Oh, it's next. Oh, good. Sorry.
Any questions on the recommended projects? Vehicles and equipment?
Pretty simple. Public Works looking for, one, that number two, the parks and rec vehicle. Katie signaled to me yesterday that she doesn't actually think she needs a vehicle. So we may keep that in there and and have one for development services. Right now they're driving that old Nissan Pathfinder. So we we may need to replace that with something that's a little more engineering focused. You have the slate truck, which is an electric vehicle. We've we've got that reserved. I believe they're supposed to be out on the market end of twenty six, but we just put that in there. That's likely a drive around town vehicle to to pick things up or do code enforcement or what have you. Hook lift truck from Public Works. This is aiming at some efficiencies that Daniel thinks he can achieve with this type of equipment. Essentially a flatbed with a hook on it, and then we can pick up dump trailers. We can pick up, we can add an attachment for another leaf vac. All types of attachments that you can get for a hook lift. So he's he's been pushing for that for, this is now the second year. One patrol vehicle and then police are interested in looking at some event barricades. These are kind of like an L and you set them down. They got wheels on them, but if a big truck hits them, it'll stop it in its tracks. And so we think this probably from a safety standpoint is better than just parking patrol vehicles at the end of roads whenever we have events. I believe that's ten of them with a trailer or five with a trailer.
Ten.
Ten with a trailer.
How do we pick them up and put them in place?
They're on wheels.
Those are pretty light.
Pretty cool.
If you've been to big sporting events, a lot of those. I've watched some videos on them there.
I've seen them over in Cary too. And I think in order to move them, do you insert a lever and and that helps? And I think in order to move them, do you insert a lever and, and that helps get the weight over the wheels? Thing, yeah. Well, that's good to know, because I, I was thinking that we were just talking about some wooden barricades. Hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money for. Thank you for that clarification.
What's happening, or can, what's the new use for a Goldbeast truck?
Uh, police department.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's pursuit rated. That just makes sense to, to go to police.
And you're saying that Parks and Rec has opted out of that vehicle that's on this memo?
Yeah, she didn't think she needed it.
Okay. Well, uh, help me understand why would be, we'd be looking at a hybrid for Public Works?
They are still our primary storm response team. And so I'm, I'm still a little uncertain about electric vehicles and storm response. You know, we have the lightning in parks now. The struggle with that is, I think we're having to charge it with a one-ten plug, which takes a, I don't know, a couple of days. Um, but they, they are managing with it, but they don't have take home cars. Um, they're not on call. So that's.
Public Works does?
Public Works does, yes. We did that about a year and a half ago. Uh, because those, i- if something happens, those, that, those folks are still required to come in and work. For emergencies. So that's I think we get a couple in the fleet, we see how they do, and then we go from there. That's, that's kind of my approach now.
So, um, the slate truck is, uh, is a new product. It's not even, uh, been released yet. And I will make very clear that I am not speaking in the capacity of my employment at NC State University when I express the personal opinion that uh, we might not want to buy the first years uh, product, uh, for an electric vehicle company that's brand new. But the F-one-fifty electric, uh, the Lightning is very well proven. And every large municipality in our region is buying them uh, as a matter of course now. Charlotte, Raleigh, Durham, Chapel Hill. And I think it's past time that we, uh, embrace that and start buying more of those, uh, well-proven um, work trucks, because they're a very robust platform. Uh, Public Works could do a whole lot more with an onboard generator effectively. Powering job sites, powering lighting, powering tools. So just really want to strongly encourage greater consideration of that. Um, and I can, once again, I can hook you up with the city of Durham who have figured out at-home charging or take-home vehicles. They've ironed out all the wrinkles and they have a policy and insurance was on board and finance office was on board and HR and everybody, so. Yeah, these issues are being addressed by others and I think we can learn from them.
I think you're right. I, the, the concern that I have is if you, if you have an individual that lives in an apartment, they're probably okay, because there's, there's charge infrastructure at most new apartments that are going in. If they, let's say, live with their parents, that can be an issue. Um, or if they own their home, they may not want to have this infrastructure installed on their home. And so when we, we kind of looked at some of our existing staff and how that might work in Public Works, we, we didn't have a smooth transition for that.
Raise their hand.
As a small organization, it's more difficult too. I mean, Durham's huge, right? So they a lot of different ways they can skin that cat, but for here, it's a little bit more difficult just because the pick is not as large. Um, but I think so far Parks has not had any issues with, with their Lightning, except we're still working on getting, you know, a, a level-two charger at Rafi, so it's you know, we're not having to plug it into the wall. Um, and Public Works is making infrastructure upgrades at their facilities to get electrical to all their buildings, um, to plan for this in the future.
Glad to hear that.
I think, but this Lightning too, it gives an opportunity to start towing some trailers with some lawnmowers in it and seeing how the battery holds up. Everybody that's told me is, is that it cuts the battery life in half. So, which is fine if you've got chargers or, um, uh, DC fast charger. So if, if we're gonna lean more towards the electric vehicles, we're just gonna have to spend the hundred and fifty it is to, to install a, a fast charger at either Public Works or some other facility that we own. And obviously with Town Hall, charging stations there, then most vehicles that are, that are fleet can be electric because we'll have a facility that we own where we can install chargers.
I think the potential or proposed cost of the slate is compelling too, that we could get two of those for one F-one-fifty.
Two slums.
For utility, like use, not for.
It's heavy work, but.
Any other questions?
Will the patrol vehicle be a hybrid?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're pretty much purchasing all hybrids right now. Unless we just don't have a choice. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Stormwater presentation?
Here, I'm gonna take fifty-five minutes to dig this. Has there already been a portion of this? It's pretty much the same. Um, please don't fall asleep. Um, okay, so CSD Development Services includes the planning and the downtown, but it also includes all the engineering, which includes stormwater, environmental, floodplain, and you're talking about water quality, floodplain management, climate change, and then even then the community and the permitting pieces that go with it. So that is what this will go through and moving towards an actual stormwater management program that includes all those items. Um, for me specifically, my role in that includes the floodplain administrator, the stormwater administrator, and making sure that we coordinate with all of the different divisions, state, federal items, and that we're not overstepping or that they're in agreement with comes to a permit style, not just what we currently have, because we do not have a permit. And that is one of the next pieces. If we look at that from the perspective of developer and the town, we're talking about, um, the, your change from the land use to the rezoning, those are the, pretty much the same thing, it's different terminology from what they're using. Talking about your conceptual planning is your site plan. Your detailed is your CDs and your permitting piece, which means there, all the state regs and federal regs get met at that point. And then you're looking, I'm on the in the construction, you're talking about your, your building permit, your CO, getting through, being able to actually do what you want to do. Um, the acceptance of the project, and that is the as-built for us. So that means they now it's active. They don't have control, or if they do, they're entering into that maintenance phase next. So that's the annual certification, which is part of the new program piece that we will need to do. From the, the next pieces is you're talking about quality and the quantity, not just one or the other. There are different conditions for each. You talk about which watershed portion you were for. So we're, we're done with the, the supply piece and then knowing if they're, how much impervious they have, what percentage of the property handles that. The nutrient requirements, that talks about, um, total maximum, um, demand and load of a some portions that can be total suspended solids, nitrogen, phosphorus, but that there are other items on the three oh three D, which gets updated often. So we would put that in the list of if it can be treated by a stormwater control measure, make sure you go ahead and go down that as part of that. Because we, we, we literally hit that red line when it says we're impacted, we're impacted all the way down. And then one of the, not just talking about just the, the runoff on the roads, we're talking about floodplains, the entire drainage area. And then understanding what part is groundwater recharge and what is runoff.
So, Trent could ask you to pause for just a second. I'm, I'm understanding that much of this work is in preparation for us, uh, reaching a point of ten thousand, population of ten thousand.
Yes.
Milestone there, that municipalities that are ten thousand or, or higher in population have to do certain things. Is that right?
That's part of it, yes, but there's another one. When we're looking at this, I'm looking at a phase-two MS four, which is not the phase one, which is a hundred thousand. But in MS four, phase two is actually fifty thousand in kind of like the, the urban area. And then your individual population is a thousand. We, we already have our population marker. Now we're looking at the growth to get into that fifty range. If we get out to that point, we need to prepare now, not later. So Cary already has theirs. They're, they're the phase two. The difference would be like Raleigh, that is a phase one. So different populations of that.
And so those, those difference in phases a- allow a municipality different levels of rigor of enforcement too, is that right?
That is correct. So you have a SWIP plan, which is kind of like your stormwater management plan. That, that's pretty much what it is. And to what degree that you have to make sure things are completed. And that goes with the regulations, especially with the Jordan rules.
So in order to protect the Jordan Lake, um, I think that I've understood that there are certain things that we can ask of developers and certain, certain things that we cannot yet ask because of this phasing, we're not yet achieved that additional phase. Is that right?
That is partially correct. There are some instances, you can request the NC DEQ do a review, given your area. We are in the hall section. There are three sections of the Jordan, we're in that portion. And we can ask that we have higher items, but it has to be in our permit and it has to be approved and something that they consider appropriate. So it would be a, a joint conversation as part of the permit piece. But we can't like just decide on our own.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and this next slide. Um, when we're looking at this, we're looking, um, about the compliance with the regulations, specifically NC DEQ. Um, most of that's passed down with the EPA items and FEMA items both. And specifically, we're talking about your surface water conditions, the types of streams, your wetlands, you're talking about your if a mapped floodplain versus an unmapped floodplain, they all have a floodplain. It's just whether or not someone's put it on a map yet. I'll tell you, I've got an aunt who lives in Asheville and I got an interesting phone call two weeks after they finally found out where she was. So she was in a non-mapped floodplain. So it is, it does exist on all of them. So some of them have non-incrustment areas that are installed along streams that do not have map buffers. Um, mapped floodplanes, uh, along buffers or one of those items. So that we would ask uh, one of the items is to look at the UDO and ask them to study it and tell me what the impact is. Where is the range where we have a zone of, you know, the safety concerns, which is basically what that is. And there's two parts to the floodplain. We're talking about a floodway versus floodplain floodway. You squeeze the floodplain that foot, you push it up to a foot in height, some of your highest velocity zone of that floodplain, that's the floodway. That's the one place you don't want anything happening. It is also the one place that you could have the most issues and failures. That's why the culverts, when they go through that section, it is usually that pass, because they line that up with that center line of the stream, and that's the floodway section through that, that you squeeze it together over it. And then we look at impervious surface limits. So Chatham County just had their LIDAR redone recently. It's brand new. So that is one item we can look at, the impervious limits, and I'll talk about like one of the next steps is to actually get a hold of that information, process it, get it to our system, or the access to a stormwater fund instead. Um, and then stormwater controls, talking about if there's regional items or if we're just, what we're expecting from developers and what we're having to do. Because there will be a component that requires from areas that didn't have one, we're eventually gonna have to fix that. So we'll be looking at a historical context as well. Um, and then the other part is stream waters identification, is making sure that part of the development plans, we require if, if it's not on a certain map, that they actually go back and tell us if it's a a blue line, if it's perennial, intermittent, or femoral. Femoral's the ones you can, it's, they consider a ditch, because it only activates during a storm. Your intermittent and your perennial are the ones that generally have water throughout the entire year for intermittent, and it will sometimes disappear underneath the ground at certain time periods. Perennial, you see water all the time. There's other qualifiers as well, but that's where you see the heaviest volume of water. And then of course, there's rivers, which is outside of that, which is like all and rocky. So this is why we include this in here, is we want to make sure that we know which one it is. It doesn't have buffers, some do not, especially if they're on the maps. And we want to make sure we have all the maps on correctly, USGS, USDA. And if we're looking at national wetlands and, that's included as well, because we don't want to have them back store wells.
Was a, a recent, um, PA decision, I understood. That had, had to do with, uh, I think regulation, maybe of, of water quality. Uh, and what I understood is that states were now prohibited from doing certain regulations unless you could actually paddle a canoe into it. Um, so wetlands were.
Yes.
Yes. Does that impact our ability to regulate stormwater?
No, it just has, um, items on what is considered a wetland and what is not, and whatever it's protected or not. It may be a wetland, but is it identifies as, as it's attached to a stream versus unattached and how that is dealt with as part of that system. It's still, if it is a wetland, and if it's on the national app, it is a wetland. If it is on one of our maps is a wetland, they have to go out there and check and see what the actual limitations, limits of that wetland are. And see if it falls within one of those ranges. They would have to spit a report as well. And this is a little bit more on the Jordan Lake history. Um, Upper Cape Fear, multi-use impoundment was reservoir that was created. And it was commissioned for flood control, down, um, downstream water quality, fish, wildlife conservation, recreation, and water supply. Was nineteen eighty-three, and since it was actually put in place, it has had nutrient issues from the beginning. So it has been the entire time. So it has, it's, alcohol is the biggest piece, and the best way to, to consider the alcohol is it pretty much it's kind of like pulling soap in your water. Now you can't drink it. It's for, for everything. It's not really soap, but some of it's okay, and then some of it will actually kill you, depending on which version of the algae that gets in. All right, um, nutrient sources, we're talking about discharges and rain on, uh, the runoff from the rainfall. Um, excessive in, inputs.
Can I stop you, May, for a minute? I just want to clarify, we're not getting our water from Jordan Lake right now, correct?
We're getting it through the process, not through Jordan, no.
Ohio River.
Right.
The whole idea of killing is, is kind of a non-issue here.
Well, our sections should be fully flowing if they got stagnant and got stopped up and had issues and they couldn't get to that section. It's potential that would be an issue, but that's not where our intake is.
Understand, okay.
Um, the rules are based on the treatment for Jordan as majority with that piece being placed there. Um, things that you would note is taste and odor, um, the lack of oxygen, any aquatic life deaths, uh, toxicities. Um, and then if it smells, this is also TM, the other TMDLs can like copper and some other iron and pieces, you'll see different, different decoloration and smells come off of that. That's one item. And then if you ever had a cross-connect where, uh, sewer got into the stormwater, that would be another option. Sorry. Um, next one to the next slide, sorry. So these are examples of some of where that flow comes from. So everything from pets and being fertilizer in your yard to the oil in the street, that all gets flushed into the stormwater, into the stream. Because we don't, it doesn't go through an actual, um, treatment plant. Some used to, and some of the stormwater pieces, they're used, you know, actual stormwater. Like they filter everything out, so, so much garbage would go through certain sections. But that does not happen now. Next one. Um, we're looking at, um, for compliance. So we have chapter four, which is what all of the environmental items are in, is chapter four. That includes stormwater and the That includes stormwater and the floodplain. The watershed protection overlay is in chapter two. Um, but it is in it as a district piece, not more the, but it should be on the environmental side. So we'll have to do in addition to that as well. So those are all items that would get updates. And then the regulatory basin like Jordan, this shows you the entire area of where all the strings down through, where it's the lower section and not hall sections. Um, if you, the next slide is the actual session law for two thousand nine dash two sixteen. I'm not going to go through all the details, but it is here. And if you have items, you can go through them all. Um, but I figured we'll go through the pieces that were added to it. The next piece is two thousand nine, four eighty-four again. This is a Senate bill, talk about new development. It talks about the existing repair buffers and the state federal institutions pieces that go with it as well. And then the next one for the regulatory basin is, this talks about the thirteen rules strategy. And it talks about monitoring stations and where they're at, talks about what are the goals needed for each of those sections. And it targets the nutrients and then a calculation pieces that go in place as well. And then additional that is the buffer rules with the impervious items. TSS, of course, total spend solids. Um, that's how cloudy, red, gray, uh, the coloration, those two, that's actually the clay and the soil mixture in the water is turned up. Um, and that's part of what can knock down the auctioning content as well as the ability to sell it out in larger storms. We don't have that option. And then the watershed protection, the drinking pieces versus where our primary is. So treatment requirements, this is one of the things that people get confused about is there's a difference between the one inch and the one year. One year is a volume of over time that falls. The one inch is that first inch that falls into the ground, everything it grabs up off the ground and chucks it off to the side. So that's all the sand, the trash, oil, everything that hits the roads, the sidewalks and the grass and by your yard, the fertilizers, the salt when we do roads, that's all of this first one inch. And the additional half is because we already see some of the climate items, we've added that. So it's now an inch and a half. So we're looking at, we already know it's bigger than what it was. So we want to capture that. That's what those four bays are for. Or like this pre-treatment piece in a stormwater control is capturing that trash. It hits that first, it settles out, goes in the pond and it's being treated and still continues to set it up here before it gets to the outlet structure. So this is that first layer. And then the storm for the one year is the rate over time. So this is based on that. Same thing for two, five, um, ten, twenty-five, fifteen, a hundred, which you use the years of storm. And that's based on, like I said, a rate over time. And that's basically, the next one is the water quantity, the other one is the quality. This is talks about storms and then the hundred year. I've had the question asked, why don't we just say, make them detain the hundred year? That may not always fix the problem. So that is why I don't want to say, let's just detain the hundred year. Have them address the entirety of the situation, what's happening with the development and let them decide if the hundred year detainment is what will solve it or if they need additional items. So asking for a flood study versus straight for the hundred year storm. You don't know if that's actually going to fix it because some of the timing may be a question about when it outfalls versus what. Cause when you start at the beginning of a property, you have that nice sheet flow. And then at some point it starts to gather in a road, create that ditch, and then you get the big streams. From started up here, it could be thirty minutes from it gets to this point to that point of the stream. When you pipe it, it goes to five minutes if you pipe that entire section on average. It's kind of like the roughest minimal time they'll say. Cause it gets there quickly. Different surface, it's not getting into the ground anymore. There's more coming out. You have to go back to the precondition. The difference between the five minutes and that thirty minutes is twenty-five minutes of time and it's not time to get into that ground anymore. You also have different services that have now occurred. So that is as part of this piece that I say, we don't just go detain the hundred year. We want to make sure included. Um, and then we check for compliance. We look at who, when they put the plans together, where that stormwater control is. Making sure that everything is caught that is in the proposed, in the units, primary, secondary devices. If it's sized correctly and if it's located where they have enough room to actually maintain it. You can put a hole in the ground, but if you can't get to the side of it, to make sure it stays clean, something's going to pile up in it. And then you have to go figure out how to get to it. So making that seventy-five percent of it, you can get to it from around it to reach. If I can't reach over here because of the wall, I'm not cleaning out this section. I can have to make sure I can get around to this side and then grab it, pick it up and get it out of the way. So that's one of the items for this is we make sure that it covers not just the design, but the maintenance phase. And they can maintain it. It's the worst thing that we have to deal with is going to be the maintenance. That's where it's going to fail. And that is where this piece comes in during the CD review is knowing, for example, can they get into the, the outlet structure? Can they get to the outlet structure? Do they have a wall? Or is it, they have an area where you can go around it? And there is a portion that we start with the NCDQ, use stormwater manual. And then we have addendums to items that we know are problems. Access being one similarities are with Durham. If you see they use the exact same thing using dendum, can you get to the SEM? They get better practicals, not just feeding before, but maintaining it. And those are one of the examples as well as some of the ones that Robert has as well.
You get to the one in this picture or is this somewhere else?
Yeah, sorry. That was what I was talking about, the, the structure. Sorry. Go back to the. That is what I'm talking about by the, the standards for NCDQ. Sorry. One more. Go back to when you were just the pitcher. So that, so that's the outlet structure right there with the grate and then the plantings all around it. So that they had to be able to maintain all the plantings and the outlet structure and get to it as well as the pond. That was a portion I was talking about for that one.
And uh, for some projects, they're responsible for maintaining it. For others, it has been left undefined and presumably it's the town that's responsible. Is that right?
It's not supposed to be. So there should be some kind of an acceptance and as built or another piece in play if they're completely done with the subdivision. In the current standard, they should be making sure everything's done. And then they maintain it on a yearly basis and give us a report. That's what should be done. Um, some of them are still in sediment format from the erosion control and have not made it to the final. Which is what we have a lot of what's going on because the county requires that all the construction up training of that stormwater control measure be completely done before you can convert it from a setup basin into an actually stormwater control measure. And that is one of the questions is we have some that have one or two lots in phase one that have not been completed. So they can't convert it. And then we don't want them to walk away. So now we have the question of what can we do to make sure that doesn't happen? And that's part of what we need to deal with.
We're looking at some bonding options. That way if they walk away, we can then go in and, and make the conversion ourselves.
And then, yes, that, that's the permit piece and the maintaining them on our side. We don't want to have to, but we expect in the part power of their HOA or their um, it's not a solid HOA, it's the version where it's a commercial. They don't call that, that's the other version.
Property owners association.
Next one for. Um, this talks about use of flood studies, knowing that we need to change some UDO items to actually have it. So we know that our maps are really old. We're talking two thousand seven, two thousand nine and we're already twenty, twenty fifteen. Others are being updated. We need to do the same. One of the requirements can be, all right, go ahead and when you submit your update before that, get that updated at that point. The code requirements, there are building code items for floodplain. We have our standard for the two foot free board. We want to make sure we update it to keep going, make sure the toe of the, that stormwater control measure is not in the twenty-five year or the hundred year. There's not a lot of difference between the twenty-five and hundred year in certain spots and others there are. So we have to make sure that it meets the standard. Um, and we'll have to look at specific areas on that. And then the other part for the board is, is it going to make the flooding worse or reduce it? But where's it going? We, we have to know that. We can't just say, oh, it's, it's less now. Where did it go? Did it go to someone else? We can't allow it to go downstream and then impact someone else. That's the, looking at the covert, doing that analysis. We're not just flushing it through. We're making sure that we've looked at both pieces. And then the other piece on top of that for the floodplain is not making a new floodplain that didn't exist before. By putting in a covert that's too small, they said, okay, well, it's not FEMA. It's in the stream, still make sure you're passing it through. So we're getting, you've got to get to that point. You're going to have a higher sometimes. Depends on the outlet or the inlet control. So water in, your inlet, water out, where the water stands. If they put a, like a kind of an erosion control device in downstream, when they put a covert in. To prevent it from coming back up and taking out the bottom of the covert. Part of the one for um, Pittsboro Elementary is the one of, it's going through and over on certain sections. It's pulling the sediment from inside one of the sections on the outside around the pipe. And so the pipe separation, if you just tilt it just enough, it pops the joint and some of that water can get in the joint depending on how it's made. Or if it is the, a metal pipe, for example, the ends will actually erode out first because that's where they get the highest friction points with the water coming through. So it's knowing what that looks like.
That's how we lost it in twenty eighteen.
Yes. Um, and then you can't slip pipe if it's completely gone and there's erosion up in the structure. So if it was filled enough, it'd be up in the structure of the, above the pipe. It'll take all that sediment out. So then your road fails. So it washes out. Um, nothing in the floodway if it's not actually meant to be in the water itself. Like if you were going to have a pond, then yes, I would see having a walkout for fishing or something like that. She wouldn't go and try to put the, the house over the edge or it's like putting that crossing piece that just doesn't go there. Uh, we do it for the roads. We do it for um portions of like our freeways, but we don't want to be in the position of letting people get that close. So then they get the, someone has piped a stream under my house, under a building. We have a couple of those, you know, that point forward. Um, the others is it's right up against my house. Streams do not stay stationary, they move. And sometimes it is inches, sometimes it is feet. If it's a big storm, like we have seen with some of the hurricanes and the recent ones, it's feet. Because they will, the, the water is not used to it. It's just going to take that additional herbice and keep going. All right. Um, and that means going from like the two foot free board requirement to a three foot is one of those items as well. Go to the next one. So this is the three primary watershed pieces that we have. Um, and Robson goes all the way through that section. Turkey has some of the biggest issues that, and there's not a lot of the mapping on Turkey. So I wanted to kind of point that out with this. Um, and then the hill has also have a couple of those items as well. So what, we're on the watershed four. These are the items and you pull the map, do you think is in that impacted? And then if you look to the, the next side of that is the waste management sites. And that is different pieces where there's some kind of a waste version, where it can be anything from landfill, storage under the ground for gas or different pieces. They're all actually labeled in the system. If there are brown sites, they're on that list. There's a, we have a site that we can go through federally full. So we want to make sure we do the updates. And then, so we're talking about environmental protections. We don't have a program. We don't have a fund. We, we have to do something where we're not going to be able to get ahead of this with the growth that we have. The, with the location, the watershed piece, we need to look at. The UDO chapter four, we're talking about four one, four oh four permits, the fuse flow, the, the buffers themselves and zones. And then a list discharge and mitigation. So we have to go back and say, all right. And the permit compliance, what is required for each section and say, here it is clearly, they don't need to be guessing. And we kind of just need it to be going back and do some historical fixes to the problems and get those in control as well. Um, the same thing with the floodplain, free board requirements, two thousand seven maps, they're, they're old. Um, flood damage prevention ordinance is twenty seventeen, October. We got to make some modifications to get it up to it. When we have North Carolina emergency management and we have FEMA, it doesn't matter. Are we have, North Carolina emergency management actually has different, some different pieces than just FEMA. So we look at ours, how we manage that piece. Um, for grants and portions of that, this also helps with that, knowing where the biggest impacts of critical infrastructure is. Talk about schools, hospitals, we're talking about um our elderly, where they're located, where, where daycares are. Don't want any of those items in a floodplain or floodways or any, any areas attached to, to get, hit that impact. If there's a major covert, do they have second access? Same thing with sizes and amount of land development that's going on. They have two points. They got streamed, they better have two points. One side's not getting out, one side will and can't do that either. So we have an old stormwater manual and the references to it, but it needs to be updated. We have no permit, which is why we need a phase two MS four. Um, and then we need the buffer protection ordinance updated. And the stormwater management ordinance renew and redevelopment to the Jordan, these updated to match what we're going after for the permit piece and adopt additional stormwater specs that are both maintenance oriented and construction so that we are putting these in so that they're going correctly. Areas of concern. Um, so we're talking about, I don't know if you've ever seen some of the floodplaces and where vehicles can, or it's not. Sometimes we'll move across the road or stay on the road. It actually depends on the weight of the vehicle and how much water's on the road. If it's just an inch and you got a couple of tires in it, you may lose, like you're just going to start to move around. You get six inches under your tires, you lose the friction, likely to float away. That is the point that, that you can't stand that right. We don't want them driving through it. We don't have an education program. We need to get these items to the public so they can understand. Please don't go in the floodwaters. You can't see if the road is still there. Don't go through it. It may not be there. And that has been a couple of instances that is definitely true. Um, hundred year storm or greater, hundred year storms also are not every hundred years. They are the instance that it could happen with that size in a given year, five percent. So there's a one percent chance of that storm happening every year. Um, and there are parents of the SEM. We want it to be maintained, not just for the fact that it works, but also nobody wants to see something that's over the line, looks like a bush instead of an actual nice neat. And it's actually, you see the water flowing across, it's more where it's supposed to. But if you have it all, the trees, the water is not, has nowhere to go. It's now between, the surface has gone up because the, the leaves and the other portion that we're getting is break down to fill it up. Same thing with the sediment fills it up and clean it out, keep going. Otherwise you lose the capacity and it doesn't look good. So both items are included. Improvements to current flooding and surface water conditions. We already have known areas of flooding. We need to reduce some of those as much as possible, find a solution. The sediment devices, conversion to the SEMs is another concern. And then relation in those SEMs to the floodplain as well. It's our big problem. And then there are actually not just floodplanes that are mapped. There are soils that have floodplain properties that we can use of our, are you going to floodplain? Use the, the actual soil conditions because that'll tell you what the soils will actually allow as well. And then never, ever put an SEM on an individual property owner because then they have to deal with all the costs. And that includes the wall, that's if there's a wall attached or any access, it should be in an HOA space or it should be, it's in the roads or something like that. They keep point A to point B without impacting an individual property owner's property. Yes.
For like, you mentioned a hundred year storm, being that we see those more often than one percent per year. Is there any, have you heard anything about them possibly upgrading that, that, those descriptions?
Yes.
The state? Yeah.
So hmm, how to say this. Rumor has it that it is being studied right now, but approximately four states, if North Carolina is one of those with the potential to relook at the actual rates um, of, for the storms. Um, that has not officially been released of what, if there are any findings or where they at in the piece. So I would have to, I'm still waiting to hear more on that.
And the SEM in relation to floodplain, um, do we currently have distance requirements? And are we allowed to require those distances uh per state law?
Yes, we have the hundred year, the toe outside the hundred year. And then the other thing is why if they have a twenty-five year, it could be used the same, portions are about the same. One, two, twenty-five years should be lower, but most of them, they could just kind of work that.
We can do that now. We doing it?
Do that, yeah. But also it would require me to ease it because if we have to go out and construct it, we start moving things around and we don't want them getting into that section and getting set up anyways. More saturation in soil, weight, equipment, even individuals going into a pond, kind of get sucked into the mud and the structure becomes wet. So same thing around the floodplain. So same thing around the floodplain area, it's not going to have that strong of shores. So we definitely look at that. See, yes. Um, and then again, we talk about uh the backbone of the system, which is the flood protection standards. So we're looking at public health, safety and general welfare. That is the primary piece of this. And when we see there's an issue, we push that first. As the primary reason between a flood study versus detain the hundred year. Do the flood study, tell me where it's flooded, make sure you're outside that area. It's part of your open space that comes, get, make sure you're doing what you need to do on that. And then if you have another piece that'll help solve the solution or reduce something, that can be added as well. Checking the culverts, making sure they're at the right side, pass the right storms. If it's a map, um. Floodplain, they have to do the hundred year passer. If it is a stream, I think that is one of the items that we, we make that same mask is this. If it's on there, there's a blue line, just look at it. Tell us what's going to happen. I don't. Believe we should have the overtopping when you have a two foot freeboard. Cause that is a structure, structure which you drive over. So that freeboard requirement is attached to the road as well. Should have two foot of freeboard from the hundred year on the road, just like you have the railroad structure. And that's why I've always read it. And that's what, one of the assumptions we would use as well. And then alterations of barriers, making sure that water does not run off in the direction it did not go before. So they can't redirect. Um, an acre of water from here to another watershed. It should go to the same point at all times. Um, and then clarifying flood hazards, these are all the soils, the streams, the wetlands, lakes. Streams, all the different pieces, everything that FEMA has mapped. And then the backwater condition based on a covert, a bridge, a road crossing, those are all flood hazards. It's not just what's mapped. And then setting the development construction requirements for the hu- flood hazards. So currently at two, I know Monroe's moved to three. Foot freeboard. So that is in their very close, so I think that's a. Under the option, we need to have that conversation with North Carolina Emergency Management and into D E Q on some of those provisions. And the same thing as before, don't create any increases or encroachments. And that's what the flood study is based on. Um, proposed structures within a hundred feet of a flood hazard soil. Or the FEMA flood hazard is kind of like automatic. Then we go through to, is it adjacent to the floodplain or is, is there a floodplain on the other side and it got cut off? So if a study was cut off, we know that there's another section on the other side that's looked at. You look at forty acres, forty acres, you had twenty four percent impervious. How much runoff are you getting? It depends on also where they put it and how much tension they do as well. But that would be one of the items we would want to look at. How much water do they get off? What is it doing to the stream? What floodplain does it create? And then um engineer, so there's a professional engineer that can do that assessment or professional hydrologist. We could take both of those pieces. So those are items on that. And then, so calculations, the manual and the permit process would actually go with those steps. And then just so the last piece is basically what's next. So this is the last one, just so you know. Um, you're looking at the U D O changes, that's going to start happening now. We've already started rewriting sections. Including the stormwater manual update and stormwater changes that follow with this floodplain protection standards. Um, different program pieces, the rain garden program, like rain program, which is barrels, gardens. Um, some of the small items that individual property owners could do and helping them find access to that. Cause I know. Wilson has done that, the rain barrel program and it has actually helped them a lot. And they have a lot of interest ahead. Quite a few come up first. So there's, you can find partnerships. So that would be one of the item I would want to make sure we had is. Reason for our actual population to say, I want a rain barrel instead of having it run off into the yard or go down the road. Um, the stormwater permit itself, again, we, we're just going to start planning, start getting the program in places. As we do that, there are items that we require. We're going to need the stormwater fund and the study to go through that piece. You're looking at the entire pieces of the program for compliance to how you maintain it every year. And then the watershed studies start with Turkey, the Hill and the Robeson. In the order of where we find the biggest points and how they line up. We either make them small watershed pieces of like Robeson or we do the entire piece of the section. So we start, we start with Turkey Creek. So we know that when we have some issues and it's not mapped, we need to find out where we have our biggest problems. So I'm looking at outfall structures and where they are and we can. Um, and then the infrastructure products, core replacements. So Pittsburgh Elementary, Oakwood. And keeping going as we find where there's the biggest items. We actually need to do inspections and start picking, picking them off on the C I P list. That would come from the stormwater fund and having that to match where we can for grants, but also making sure that we actually have the base to do the maintenance. Of all these items that we are in our right of ways or on us. And then creating the regional devices if we can. To fix the existing conditions that we have around the area. And then again, stream restoration, that we identified in that as well. And repairs can actually be done. I'm certified in stream repairs. We can have our team do that. So we can actually do it as a volunteer, work with the. The county for soils and actually go out there and do some of the smaller stuff ourselves. And keep a, a smaller budget for that, but do it on a yearly basis, once a year. And in addition to that, it's the green infrastructure items. There is quite a bit of money for green infrastructure. This is part of that. It's finding what those regional devices look like. And then range gauge stations installation. We need about at least four. That we don't have. And that's anywhere from twenty five to fifty thousand. That includes the install of the actual gear and then. Getting it set up with a library and then having it monitored because we can hand it off and say, can you monitor this for us? There's five minutes, five minutes, we should be programs.
Twenty five thousand each?
It can be. It just depends. There's grants for that.
Cause the, can those paired with a, an overall like either citizen science or uh climatology monitoring devices?
They can, as long as they meet the needs and we're going to want them at the crossings whenever possible.
Okay.
Cause then it gives you monitoring of the crossings and when you need to close the roads, because it, it'll track the elevations of the water. So when I worked for Durham, we had a nineteen foot rise at one of those sections of those crossings. And it was overtopping, it was back people's, up to the yards. They use that to actually populate the numbers and what portion of the road they needed to close.
Yeah.
We do that across, N C O T uses it as well. There. That's it. Questions?
Yeah, where, where's the dollar figures?
Hmm, so.
I'd see him.
Start with the easy one. Stormwater repairs for the streams and sections. If we put a five thousand dollar a year budget, we could get the certifications. And the materials to do it ourselves. And then get into the program and see if we can actually get some volunteer assistance for that piece. So that's one item. We would do it in the quarter months anyways, so that you allow the plants to grow, that type of thing.
And repeat that, that's five thousand for certification.
Right, yeah.
Now, we would. Do we use our staff to do that?
We can certify and we can go out and do it. And that's the smaller stuff. That's not anything big on a restoration. Restoration needs to design and that's a little bit different.
It'd be part of staff volunteer hours.
I love the house.
Buddy, have fun.
Water.
Right, yeah. So is that also, do you including the street, stream repairs?
Yeah, the repairs, but not restoration, repair. So if it's above, above the normal high water line. We can repair those sections, but we can't in the water itself and community that, that's a restoration. So we're looking at two pieces, restoration, we would look as part of a watershed study about where we need to do a restoration versus what we can get away with with a. Repair to stabilize. And then the next piece is the LiDAR assessment. We know we have the county LiDAR, we need to assess it. We need to get all the impervious data. Put it into a G I S layer. And then we probably need a dashboard tool piece so that we control that as well as our SEMs. And our outfalls. So we can actually start monitoring and then asking for that data to install it in there. So we can go out a year and say, oh, you're flagged. We need to see your report this year and make sure that gets reviewed for all the stormwater controls we have. As well as our outfall conditions for the culverts, making sure that they're in good condition and we actually review that. So basically this is a flag. And that's roughly nine K to one fifty, depending on what we go after. We at least need the LiDAR, but we want to add the tools so we can start doing that piece. That's another item.
That's a one time deal.
Yes.
Right.
The stormwater fund itself is roughly going to be about a hundred and fifty thousand. And that would be created tier system where. It's this size, it doesn't get a charge. It's the next size, it gets so much money. But we need to figure out what that looks like based on what we have. Raleigh has a similar one. If you want to take a look. On their site and I can forward a link to what Raleigh system does. But that would be. It needs to be done about every five, ten years, but five years is the best average to making sure that study is done. We have the current rates. And we make sure that we have that tier approach.
We contract that out?
We will contract that out, yes.
And there's cost for that too.
That's the one fifty.
Okay.
That would be the, the study and the framework for it.
Wait, so that's, that's a fund?
Mm-hmm, so that would be a fee that either residential, commercial, industrial would pay based on their amount of impervious that they have. And that would go into a fund that we would use to maintain the structures or add, ones for existing structures. It could be a portion of how we operate and dealing with the costs. Cause we have um. As a community, we have all these compliance items. We have, we have as well as. Pieces that have to be maintained. So we have to do both pieces to that. The other thing is our stormwater permit fees would be a part of that too. Like whenever developed, they pay a fee. And then when they do their Euro certification, they pay a fee. It all goes into a fund. And then all of our costs should come out of that for the stormwater, the floodplain, the environmental piece. That is a fund for stormwater specifically.
Can P D Ds that have already been approved be subject to that fund or subject to those fees?
Anyone who has impervious on their property will be subject to the fee for the stormwater fund itself. Not though, like they don't get a re, redo permit or anything like that, but the fees are anywhere from. A dollar twenty two to five dollars a month. It depends on how much impervious that, if they have nine thousand impervious, they're getting the highest charge. If they have three hundred, four hundred, they're not getting a charge.
You're talking about H O As, you're talking about developers and builders, not builders, but everybody.
If it's an impervious on their property, it's everybody, yeah.
And the one fifty, oh, sorry, good.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, clarify, it's, so it's an enterprise fund that we would be setting up that is just for stormwater. So it would be totally separate from general fund. You have to keep all the revenues, expenses separate. You can't do transfers between the funds.
New utility.
It's a, yeah.
It is.
Exactly.
Yep.
And the one fifty is to hire a consultant to do the initial study, similar to how you do uh a study for S D Fs. Or system development fees, yeah.
And to create the framework so that we have established your system.
And, cause someone is likely thinking it, but how does that affect residential, individual residential?
It depends on the individual residential, how much impervious they have. If the house owner has nine thousand square feet, they're paying the higher rate. If they have the smallest, they're not paying anything. So it just depends on whichever tier it is. They go by how much area it is.
Government buildings? How does that work?
That, that's going to be a commercial. That'll be right for the, the owner to pay.
I think it may be helpful, probably in, if you could, in a couple of weeks, provide an example of a.
I'll send the raw.
Schedule I can send along, you all can look at it just as an example, preferably of a town similar size, if that's possible.
Oh, so that, that sounds like uh. A, a capital expenditure in order to study and then set up framework for. The implementation of a new utility. Uh, and then it would be in a later year that the ordinances would be posed and, and noted upon to. Uh, implement that utility and, and the fees associated.
Yes, you would have to review everything and approve it once they put that position and then figure out what schedule works. It could be implemented in stepped stages at all at once, if necessary. We can ask them to do that. So if we wanted to do. Thirty percent of it in the first year, fifty percent of it in the second year, seventy five in the third, and then the remaining. So like, you could. If you want to drag out to get to the full cost of it. So if they said, it needs to be this in five years, you need to be making this. If you want to step it on top of the rates, yes. On top of the tier.
It doesn't come as a shock.
Right. So there, there are ways to make it, get used to it, understands what they're doing and then actually be able to see some of the results from it. Before you just go, here, here's all at once. Just take a shot.
And who shoulders this burden? Is it uh, who's, who's administrating this? Planning department or?
Development Services Department.
Look services, okay.
And then the other one is the watershed studies, starting with Turkey Creek. It depends on what we get, but it could be anywhere from two hundred fifty thousand or more. And it's probably going to be more. It just depends on what are we looking to ask for, because we're going to ask for a C I P. Which means any of the areas that we know that can be restoration design and um. Projects for the culverts, if they, they got to do the assessments along those areas, we could ask them to do the inspections on them while they're doing the watershed study. And there are grants for some of the watersheds that we would go after as well. We wouldn't just say all of it. We try to make as best we can to cover it.
So I heard you prioritize the Turkey Creek watershed, or I guess we call it a sub watershed.
Mm-hmm.
Um. As the highest priority because it's not mapped.
Well, I.
Because there's some problems there.
Yes.
Um. And, and how do we reconcile that with my, my gut instinct just from driving around town? Maybe it's just. Uh, observational error or, or data collection error that, that it seems that Hill Creek. Or maybe it's Little Creek. I've heard different names for it.
Hill was the second one that needed to follow closely behind that.
Yes. So how do we place that in second when we know that we have ongoing impacts? To businesses and uh town infrastructure already from that watershed, that sub watershed?
If we want to do more than one study at a time, that's a good idea, but I also want to make sure that we have. Some information on the ones that we don't have any study information.
Sure, yeah.
Um, with the larger storms that are recent, we saw some of that with the larger storms especially. So we, I would like to go all at one time.
So can we, can we proceed with some, some uh. Measures to uh mitigate burden and already known harms and impacts. Uh, while also pursuing the study in Turkey Creek?
Yes, we can. So we can do smaller like shelling studies and those could be anywhere from fifty to one hundred thousand, just depending on how big we want to go. But the one concern I am worried about is where they start timing each other at confluences, because you get a backwater condition from the downstream. And we want to make sure we're looking at that, especially with the developments. So we're asking some of the developments to actually do that with their studies. Some sections. So we may get some of that covered. We already have some that are coming in the Turkey Hill. So if we, the quicker. How much more do we need to do and use that information that way as well? Use as much information that we have existing as possible.
Well, point well taken because that's, I think Turkey Creek spills into uh Roberson and that's why that backed up so badly.
Yes.
I think Hill Creek eventually leads into Robeson Creek too, right?
Yeah.
I think if I remember correctly, Turkey's a little bit closer to the, the main section. And I think that was one of the reasons, because the further you get out in the water, the backup situation can be in each section. So that's why we want to make sure we look, because that's also can come back up the other side of it as well.
So mirroring. Or maybe five asks?
Yes. And I would do what I can to find matches and or most of it through the grant process. But like I said, right now it's very limited on the funds, but for the green infrastructure and study pieces, we may be able to find a bit.
I would really appreciate the next time that we talk about the budget, if we could have that on paper, those numbers on paper. And, and have some assistance for us to work out prioritization of these things.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I'm assuming that you are so adept at grant uh digging. And procuring that might be included in that same.
Yeah, maybe score some of these items as to their likelihood of being grant funded or.
Especially.
Cause May's only been here a month and just getting this presentation on this was a push.
Huge.
We've um.
Great revelation.
I also asked him help. I mean, I got some friends at Durham since I've worked there for a while. I was like, you know, we did this, can you borrow it?
Yeah.
You should take this portion.
Well, it's relief. Thank you. It's, it's a lot to take in. Uh, but it's, it's uh reassuring.
So the timing is perfect too. It's perfect.
Have the numbers and some resources to go with that next time.
My biggest fear is the uh, the Belmont Hill, I'll call it a hill, uh, the development. Um, the, that would be the east side of Hillsborough Street. That's going to be a lot of impervious surface over there. And it's coming right down the place where we have problems. So this, this timing is excellent.
And that is one of the items that I'm asking is they do a downstream, downstream assessments of the culverts and the pipe networks, make sure they can handle that flow. And that is one of the items that I'm asking, is they do a downstream, downstream assessments of the culverts and the pipe networks, make sure that they can handle that flow. Cause if the upstream pipe is bigger than the downstream, it's gonna flood no matter what they do.
All right, which area, Mr. Foley?
Uh, a, a, any, anywhere, um, well, the, the Belmont Point Hill, that whole hill, that whole hill that we're.
Mm-hmm, flood draft.
Yeah, and, and it was both directions.
Oh.
And Fire Tower Road, and it's coming over right downtown, town.
We've already seen the issues that happen at times.
Ms. Armstrong, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Basically, of course, it floods on fifteen five oh one at Basil Womack street, all the way up from, I actually piled place all the way down, almost into downtown.
Mm-hmm.
So my concern is, is that, are you going to be looking at that area in conjunction when our DOT plans to expand the street?
Yes, we'll have to actually be in that communication with them to make sure that it actually gives a full bypass, not just a, it's gonna flood, they don't want it to flood either.
It simply, it can really flood really bad in that general area.
Yeah, we don't wanna have to have blocked roads, and we also don't want it to have an washout, let's not realize it either, because it's some of the water. So definitely have them look at that as a portion.
Uh, I, I estimated that just that, just that widening project is gonna be an acre to an acre and a half of more impervious surface.
Doing subsurface stormwater.
I keep hearing that, love to see some drawings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm just so grateful for your presentation, thank you.
Yeah, I, I do have one question for you, Ms. Armstrong. Uh, you mentioned something about UDO changes. Uh, are they being submitted to the board for our approval, or how, how is that process happening?
We go through the lawyer, and our team goes through and first give them to the lawyer for, make sure we didn't miss anything. And then we go to the planning board first, let them go through what we have, um, proposed, and then it will come to the board after that. So full process.
And you mentioned something about Wilson, uh, the town of Wilson having rain barrels?
Rain barrels, um, you said rain gardens for residential, if they want that portion to help with some of their stormwater concerns. There are things that individual property owners can do to help as well with their water, not just us doing it. So it's private property, individual ownership have full size S E Ms.
So it's a, uh, an amendment or a, uh, an ordinance that says you can use rain barrels or?
Well, not just that, but we will help find a way for them to have better access to maybe find a solution or an agreement where we can reduce the cost for them, so kind of us assisting to get access to it.
What you're saying, I just want to say.
My, my store is right next to the creek, uh, Hillside Creek.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it smells like sewage, um, pretty constant and consistently at least half a month. And a lot of the other little creeks around town smell that way, too. Is that something that's gonna be, uh, part of the study when we?
That, that needs to be a water quality component, so that, that would be like a little bit higher, but we would definitely do the testing and portions to figure out if there's a cross connect where a sewer line has gotten ruptured, or it is fixed in with a stormwater, so if we could trace it back. Or if it is one of those TMDs I was talking about, where sometimes it's a little stinky or weird looking in color. That's one of the items, we would actually do tests on the water quality side. We'd have a, we'd have a consultant to do that for us, because we don't have facilities for that.
I think I spoke with most of you about Tri River's request for some capital items, y'all's thoughts on those. Uh, but we've already mentioned the smell to Tri River of trying to figure some of that out.
Do you have one more question? And everyone else may know it, it's about flood study, uh, flood hazard soils.
Um, flood sources are the streams, it can be the lakes, the ponds, it could be underground systems. It's, is generally the, the streams or the rivers that's attached to source. It's where the flood comes from, all streams have, are a flood source, just what condition of how much rain gets to it.
So that's what the soils are?
Oh, soils, I'm sorry, I should say source. Soils are the actual soils, there's organics and materials in the wetter areas, and how it breaks down, it's softer. So those soils, sometimes it's not just in the bed of the stream or in the section that is considered a floodplain. The larger floodplains will have it, the soils reach outside of what would be a normal fifty to a hundred foot kind of an estimate, just a range, it would be outside of, so you can see where it had flooded historically in different time periods.
Wow, thank you.
No questions? She was right, I went over fifty-five minutes.
This was great.
Thank you.
It was our fault.
Congrats, thank you.
Uh, space for board priorities, number priorities? Which one, sir?
Sure, yeah, I already addressed the better audio here. Um, in, in a similar vein, uh, I'd really love it if we could find a few hundred dollars to do some sound absorption in the community house. Um, maybe, maybe it's a few thousand, but I don't think it's more than a few. Um, and, um, this is a big one, um, and, and I'm afraid that it's gonna be a significant cost, but, um, I remain concerned about the, the fiscal impacts of what we committed to with the small area plan. And, um, I hear rumors that there's a section design plan that's gonna be coming early in the new year. And I think we need to get ready for that with uh, revenues and expenditures and liabilities on a spreadsheet. Understanding what are the impacts. And, um, if staff don't feel up for that, I know that there are firms that can do that. Urban Three and Bolton and Mink, we're already working with Bolton and Mink. Um, I know that those are two that can do it. Um, so, yeah, I wanted to raise that issue, the overall question, uh, what will be the fiscal impacts of the growth that we've already committed to? Any other items? I, I mentioned the, the, uh, composting toilets down at Rock Ridge Parks. I've been hurt on that point. Yeah. Mayor Franklin?
Well, my main concern, as you all always know, is about money and making sure that we have enough money to do what we plan to do. So Jonathan told me I was a budget hawk, and I am. So that's my main concern. And I know that Ms. Meacham will have her eyes on that, then we get the new finance director as well. So I do feel comfortable with you all, so I'm not going to talk about my priorities. But that's my main priority.
Mr. Foley?
A couple of, the first one, I, I would like to focus on the staff and, uh, perhaps Chatham Park as well. Uh, is the straightening out of Fire Tower Road. I know we've talked about it, uh, Mr. Franklin, but, uh, I'd love to see that straightened out so that it connects directly with Martin Luther King Drive. That, that is a traffic, uh, uh, it's, once, once that area is developed, it's gonna be more difficult. You, you'll have to turn left and then take a right to get downtown or right, left. If you just had a, a normal T there, I think it would be a much more sane way of doing things. And I know Chatham Park would have to move things around, but that's one of my priorities. Second priority would be addressing the profound need downtown for, for affordable housing. We have the county moving out, I'd love to see some proposals about that, and I have some ideas that I'll share. And then the third thing is the, the, the space behind the, the shops on Hillsborough Street. Uh, where City Tap is, you look down, you have a, you have this great area that's not really being used correctly. And I'd love to see us putting our minds together and making it, uh, it's, it's not necessarily the downtown improvement plan that we were talking about, but I would love to see that area straightened out, cleaned up. And, uh, cause, uh, I, I think about families walking up and down during Christmas, during the, uh, the, the tree lighting ceremony. And it's, it's just not the proud side of Pittsburgh. And I would love to see those three things. Action on those in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and then just a couple for me, I wanna make sure that we continue to do, uh, staff pay benefits, training, um, you know, not just paying for training, but making the time for training as well. Um, that we have the coverage for that, things, that we continue to be the, the employer of choice. Uh, and then, uh, the downtown trolley system. Uh, if we can ever get that started, I would like to continue it, um, so thinking about that funding. So last I heard was December start, so I don't know what December that is.
But I haven't heard that.
That was, that was two months ago, maybe, at Central Mines, but, um, so, and, and I think there's some, I mean, we're just depending on the money, but there's value in starting it in a lower traffic time, I think, and kind of figuring it out a little bit, get it going. But recognizing that the funding that we did apparently get is for a limited time, and then how we continue it past that time and then expand it as well, so. All right. Anything else?
I'll, I'll echo, uh, Commissioner Foley, your point about affordable housing, uh, and I'm realizing that, that my, uh, earlier this year, I had said, set for myself that I wanted to raise during budget scoping, um, a bolder ambition for us on affordable housing that I think we're putting aside, uh, is it one percent or two percent of our budget right now?
One penny.
One penny. So how does that work out as a fraction of our budget approximately?
Well, we have forty-four pennies, so it's one forty-fourth.
Yeah, it's like two point one percent.
Okay. So, uh, can we contemplate and look at some numbers and what it would entail for us to strive for five percent of our annual budget in that fund? I think we just need to get really serious about this, and, uh, it still rings in my ears a developer in a most unpleasant way, wagging his finger and slamming his hand on the table, what are you doing about it? What is the town doing? What are we doing in terms of deficits in affordable housing? And, um, it's a really, really bad situation. I know, I don't need to repeat, everyone in this room knows how bad it is. And I, I think that our budget is a manifestation of our values, and we talk an awful lot about affordable housing and we work on it really hard, but how much of our budget are we putting towards it? And I think five percent would be appropriate, but that's, you know, it's kind of arbitrary, it's just a way to start the conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have some thoughts I'll share. At a later date, okay. Thank you, I'm waiting, pinged about my kids, so.
We're all waiting for that.
I know, I had noticed no one was breathing, and I thought, well, I better say something.
But I do echo that, the affordable, that's always been my concern, as long as I've been on the board, I've always been, uh, active with affordable housing.
And that's
It's not just a Pittsburgh problem, it's a national problem.
That's right.
So we have to work nationally with others to see if we can try to eliminate that or alleviate that, which is really a difficult task, because things are so expensive, building is very expensive. So of course, if we have that money set aside, perhaps we can put some type of programs in place to assist homeowners and, or prospective homeowners in trying to purchase something within the town of Pittsburgh.
Shaping your plan, I'll, I'll
Yes.
With you.
Yes.
One by one.
It's, you know, that the Chatham County, the Affordable Housing, Chatham County Affordable Housing Task Force, they do a lot of this stuff. But now it does, to me, it needs to get to the point where they are assisting actual families, not just in trying to rehabilitate their homes, but to maybe be able to assist them financially.
Building off.
Yes.
And, and by the same token, maybe we can extend, uh, these, these thoughts and these aspirations to be a little bit more assertive with the county in requesting that they make their investments inside the town limits. Uh, because it's already in line with their growth policies, that, that residential growth should be concentrated in the towns.
Right.
I'm not aware of their investments and where their investments are going, but I know that the county is making investments in affordable housing, and so maybe it should be in Silas City, in Pittsburgh, and in Goldston.
They are making, uh, concessions here in Pittsburgh, so.
Yeah, they got a considerable investment
Yeah.
Coming up, from my understanding.
Yeah.
And they're primarily doing it where development is happening to, to spend that money, you know, so it has historically been out of the towns when we couldn't build as much.
Sure.
Sure. But I think that, you know, the budget as a, uh, indicator of our priorities is a really good, is a real concept. Um, I think percentage wise, we are actually pretty high, like compared to the county, for one thing, of what they put towards it. Um, and then, but the other piece of it is with our development, what we're able to do, we have been able to get commitments for affordable housing, commitments for parks, commitments for those type of things that don't reflect in our budget, but are producing. Uh, so that's a, something I hope we can continue to take advantage of with, uh, as long as we're allowed to do agreements with developers.
And, and many occasions and many, many different voices have, have, uh, expressed hopes about the downtown redevelopment study and those individual properties, uh, including affordable housing. So I know it's a multi-front, multi-pronged effort, uh, but thanks for hearing me.
And we are looking to have a presentation on the redevelopment study for your, uh, your budget workshop. And I know that, that seems odd, but we're trying to, to align, uh, the timelines for both the county and the town, so that we can get information roughly at the same time, and that, those dates kind of lined up. So that's what we're thinking right now. We, we saw the highest, the highest investor use analysis this morning, and they're gonna make some edits to that. Uh, and then they've got to compile all the, uh, uh, input from the community.
And again, that date would be when?
I believe that's April seventh. It's kind of the rough target we have now for, for the
Workshop.
Yeah, to be, uh,
Budget retreat.
Yeah, that may change, but as of right now, that's, that was the date that was thrown out. And I think that the property involved in that is a tremendous amount of value to the community that we can use without tax or anything, so. It, it seems as if the administrative buildings and the sheriff buildings will be part of the first borrow in twenty-seven. This may be moving a little quicker than what we had thought. In terms of, I know the sheriff location, that has always kind of been our default, was some portion of that property would be used for, for some affordable housing. Even, even possibly senior, uh, senior housing, uh, from an affordable approach. But, uh, in, in terms of a percentage of our budget, I mean, five percent sounds great, but five percent of our budget is not that much. You know, and the impact that may create may be very little short term, you know, you, that may be something you have to build up over time. Um, you know, Fire Tower, what is that, eighty-something units, and they need almost a million dollars. It would take us five years, four or five years of saving those pennies to to be able to support an eighty-six unit project. So I don't, the impact of five percent may not be as high as possibly what what is, I think one cent can give us about another million and a half of debt capacity. Which I think we could utilize that debt capacity for far more than just putting it into a savings account. Um, so that's probably another thing we need to look at, is how we utilize our money.
Yeah, well, I mean, what I was thinking is, is these, these unusual opportunities like the Greenway at the, um, Roberts Run Development, the Habitat Project and the significant need for that facility to have the same access to recreation as other facilities. And so I think we did direct some of our Affordable Housing Reserve Fund to that, didn't we? Or did you figure out another way to finance it?
Yep, Chatham Park's paying for it as part of their affordable housing element, up to six hundred fifty thousand. And then we've got another development that we're negotiating with that i- is going to contribute money to Habitat as as their fee in lieu for their affordable piece to get that off the ground a little sooner than later.
And that's a gem also, Roberts Run. Uh, it's, it's making a statement, like Commissioner Bonnus was, was he asking? Roberts Run is going to be right downtown, for goodness sake, and it's affordable housing, we're making a stand. And it's, it is going to be a gem and, uh, and wait for it to start the ground.
Should see it in two, three months, three months. Yep, we had TRC with them this week.
Good.
Right?
That's it?
Thank you. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those are favorable, say aye.